If we could have the members of the Post and the other state people join us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You join me in a moment of silent prayer? Well, we will call this meeting to order and we will welcome everybody to the VFW Post in Hagues Pond. We thank them for hosting us and it's a beautiful hall, so thank you all for letting us be here. All right, are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda? All right, hearing done, unfinished business. We will open the RFP for the Hazard Mitigation Consultant.
And we have received two proposals. And I forgot my opener, so we're ripping it.
Do you want to see that again?
I forgot my opener and we're ripping it. First proposal is from Vision Planning and Consulting.
Where are they out of?
They are from Fulton, Maryland.
I think you might have to hold the mic up, folks just hit her mouth.
Okay.
Is it on?
Yeah, yeah.
Where's Matt?
The caution should be in a separate envelope.
Is it in a separate one?
It's supposed to be in a separate envelope.
Okay. I wasn't finding it, so... Not finding a separate envelope. I don't know what to say about that, Matt. Maybe you know. The second proposal is from MCM Consulting.
Where are they from?
MCM is from...
St. Mary's.
St. Mary's, Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
And their proposal is $88,737.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to take those...
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. Consider approving the minutes of February 8, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
New business, consider proclaiming the month of March 2024 as Intellectual Disability Awareness Month in Bradford County and Commissioner McClain will read the proclamation.
Whereas those with intellectual disabilities are valued members of our communities and whereas intellectual disability is characterized by significant limitations both in intellectual functioning and adaptive behavior that originate before the age of 22. Whereas people with an intellectual disability are all of racial, ethnic, educational, social, economic backgrounds and whereas early intervention, education, employment, home and community-based services continue to be vital in enabling citizens with intellectual disability to function and thrive. Therefore, we, the Bradford County Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the Constitution and laws of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Intellectual Disability Awareness Month in Bradford County and are proud to recognize in many accomplishments and contributions the people with intellectual disabilities.
Thank you. Thank you, and we will be doing a public proclamation, I believe, in front of the courthouse.
Yes.
Do you have the date of that?
Friday.
Friday, March Friday.
Next Friday.
Do you want to get a motion on that? What time?
Ken.
Yeah, encourage people to come, it's heartwarming.
Yeah, it is.
No, organizations like SERV and all the wonderful things that they do, you know, for these folks, these folks try hard, they really do, are valued members of our community and I know I've employed them when I had my business and it was just a success story and just good stuff, so encourage everybody to come.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving Resolution 2024-11 adopting the PA ABLE Savings Program for people with disabilities, providing a way for individuals to save tax-free for the disability-related expenses without impacting eligibility for important benefits. And we have Stephen from the Pennsylvania Treasurer's Office with us and he's going to read the proclamation.
Of the resolution.
Resolution, yeah. Yep.
And just a real brief background on this too, you know, we at the Treasury have a variety of financial programs and they're designed just for the benefit of Pennsylvanians, but we found that when employers offer it is when people hear about it and are more likely to participate, so it just so happens that we were planning to attend the event that was just discussed next Friday, March 1st. Stacy Garrity would be up for that, but reached out to the Commissioners to see if they would adopt a resolution because this helps raise awareness throughout the state and this is the first county in the 67 counties of the Commonwealth to actually take this measure, so this is very exciting for us at the Treasury and will help us gain traction throughout the state based on the leadership of the Commissioners here today, so we thank you.
And it's Treasurer Garrity's home county.
This is Treasurer Garrity's hometown.
That's right.
So the PA ABLE Financial Independence for People with Disabilities Resolution 2024-11, whereas Bradford County Commissioners are committed to the belief that people with disabilities are an essential part of the workforce and should be treated with equality, dignity, and respect, and whereas employees have a responsible, or employers have a responsibility to ensure they are supporting employees with disabilities by implementing new policies and reviewing and updating existing ones. Whereas people with disabilities bring invaluable perspective and experience to many organizations throughout Pennsylvania, making our workplaces stronger, and whereas the Pennsylvania Treasury Department administers the PA ABLE Savings Program for people with disabilities, providing a way for individuals to save tax-free for disability-related expenses, which is actually very broad, without impacting eligibility for important benefits. And whereas at no cost employers can help empower employees with disabilities by providing awareness of PA ABLE and facilitating automatic payroll deductions to employees' PA ABLE accounts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bradford County Board of Commissioners is partnering with the Pennsylvania Treasury Department to increase financial independence among people with disabilities in our county and their families and will, one, make the PA ABLE program known to all county employees and offer each the ability to contribute to PA ABLE accounts via payroll deductions, and, two, set precedent for other employers in Bradford County, thus encouraging them to follow this example by offering the same consideration to their employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate this.
Yep, nope, thank you.
Appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. Consider proclaiming the month of March 2024 as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month in Bradford County and I will read the proclamation. Whereas we, the Bradford County Commissioners, are proud to commemorate March 2024 as Bleeding Disorders Month in Bradford County, and whereas this designation will formalize and expand upon the federal designation 30 years ago of March 1986 as Hemophilia Awareness Month and in 2016 when the entirety of the Bleeding Disorders community came together to encompass all bleeding disorders. And whereas the Federal Department of Health and Human Services designated March 2016 as National Bleeding Disorders Month, and whereas these bleeding disorders which share the inability to form a proper blood clot are characterized by extended bleeding after injury, surgery, trauma, or menstruation and can lead to significant morbidity and can be fatal if not treated effectively. And whereas many individuals with hemophilia become infected with HIV and hepatitis C in the 1980s due to the contamination of blood supply and blood products, and whereas the Awareness Month will generate greater awareness and understanding of not only hemophilia but inheritable bleeding disorders, including von Willebrand disease and rare bleeding disorders which affect millions of individuals around the world, and whereas this Awareness Month will bring light to the great scientific achievements in the treatment of bleeding disorders for which there is no cure and the greater pursuit of advanced therapies and cures to these disorders. Whereas the bleeding disorders community's relationships with policymakers have fostered numerous medical and policy advancement beneficial to those affected by bleeding disorders and their loved ones, and whereas this Awareness Month will foster a greater sense of community and shared purpose among individuals with an inheritable bleeding disorder, and whereas this Awareness Month will elevate awareness of the engagement in the inheritable bleeding disorders journey beyond the community to the general public, enabling the prevention of illness, unnecessary procedures, and disability. Now therefore we, the Bradford County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as Bleeding Awareness Disorder Month in Bradford County. So I will entertain a motion for that.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving the fee agreement for professional services between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and the law firm of Brand, Williams, Caldwell, and Blaney effective January 1, 2024 through June 30, 2024.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving the agreement for professional services between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and the following providers effective January 1, 2024 through June 30, 2024.
So moved. Second, and I'll just note the concern is for, the concern professional services is for foster care counseling and the George Junior Preventative Aftercare is for an extension of the casework for intensive cases.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving an amended agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Adelphi Village, Inc., effective January 1, 2024 through June 30, 2024.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving the agreement for professional services between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and George Junior Republic, effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
So moved. Second, and I'll just note this is for the housing of intensive cases in Grove City.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and Benjamin McClure for licensed constable services for the Domestic Relations Office effective February 8, 2024.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving a grant agreement between Bradford County and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $432,566 for the 2023 911 statewide interconnectivity funding.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving the Medical Assistance Transportation Program, final allocation amount for fiscal year 2022, 2023 in the amount of $1,414,833 and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving the Bradford County Park Rates, Rules, and Regulations for 2024.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving an insurance proposal for environmental liability between Bradford County and Assurance Brokers, LLC, and authorize the chairman to sign.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider approving the hires and transfers from Danielle Johnson down through and including Ashley White.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In other business, Charlotte Parks has been appointed in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas to fill the office of Bradford County Auditor effective February 26, 2024 for the unexpired term to December 31, 2027.
So moved.
Don't have to.
Oh, sorry about that.
Salary board, there's no unfinished business, new business, we will set the grades and salaries from Danielle Johnson down through and including Ashley White.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Assessment board, there's no unfinished business, new business, consider approving the following for tax exemption, it is Shane Miller and it is a new veterans exemption.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, visitors' remarks.
Before we get started, this week we lost Commissioner Bill Gannon and he passed away and I talked to his brother Max, many of us know Max Gannon and of course Max's wife is our president judge, and I knew Bill a little bit, but I'm pretty proud of him. He was a commissioner and then he went to Harrisburg under the Ridge administration and served in Harrisburg quite honorably and well until his retirement. And I'll just say this, anytime you ever talk to Max about his brother Bill, there was a twinkle in Max's eye and if you hear about brotherly love, well, that was, I told, when I talked to Max yesterday on the phone, I told him that, you know, that that was real evident, that how much he loved his brother and so if you could keep the Gannons in your prayers for, you know, a man that sat right at this table and went to Harrisburg and served as well. We'd also like to welcome Commissioner Sullivan back to our meeting, it's good to see you again, John.
Mark, Pete, you got the questions?
I just, um, I just want to mention there's PA ABLE keychains, brochures, and pens back there, you're welcome to help yourself.
Stacy's giving away stuff?
All American made too.
There you go.
She does a great job.
She does.
Very proud of her.
Yep, she does a great job.
What's the amended agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Adelphi Village, is that, is that, that's that same agreement that where you set up a truancy program?
I think it's different.
Yeah, it's different, but it's an amended, it's an existing contract, it's just, there's amended language.
I think it's a rate adjustment.
Yeah, it's a rate adjustment.
And then, um, has the domestic, this is, the Domestic Relations Office, they must have had constables already, right? This is nothing new.
Yeah, this is a new constable.
It's a new constable.
It's a new program?
It's just replacing one, yeah. It's not a new program, it's just a new constable to replace one that...
Okay, then. And then, um, what's, what's the grant agreement between Bradford County and the Pennsylvania Emergency and the agency for access for statewide interconnectivity funding?
Matt can probably answer that better.
So that's, that is part of our normal 911 funding, interconnectivity specifically relates to the next generation 911 data at the state level. So that is to ensure that we are interconnected with the state network so in the event of there's now that we can hand off calls between various locations.
And I didn't know if there's any changes in the, in the park rates.
There was a slight increase in the park rates for camping.
What's, what's the increase?
Michelle has the numbers. I can...
James, just so you know that we, you know, we put a lot of money in the parks and, you know, we have proposed new water, sunfish, we put new campgrounds in up there.
This one from 700.
You know, we made improvement to sunfish, or to Horn Brook a couple of years ago with the addition of really nice campsites, not to mention one of the nicest, you know, kids' playgrounds around, so it's, so it's been quite a bit of money put into it, into our parks. And there's one park right there here, Cook Pond.
So what are, what's the change in the camping rates?
Um, I think everything, um, I'll just speak to the seasonal, so seasonal for Horn Brook went from 850 to 900.
$850 to $900.
Correct, and then for Sunfish Pond, it went from 700 to 900, so Horn Brook and Sunfish are even at 900.
So it aligns the park rates for both parks.
Are there, are there changes in the, in the camping rates for more short-term?
I believe so, yeah.
I believe there are, yes, but we can get those numbers to you.
Okay. And, okay, that goes to my questions.
Thank you, James. Sunshine, do you hear?
Um, yeah, just, I just didn't hear you clearly. The concern professional services, that's for foster care counseling.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What is the George Junior Preventative Aftercare for?
I believe it's for an extension of casework where you have sort of an intensive case, that's what George Junior is.
And that's, um, like a little bit down further, they're also working with Children and Youth Services for housing, for intensive cases.
Correct, so there's the George Junior Preventative Aftercare and then that's what I just spoke about, and then the George Junior Republic, that's when you're actually having a housing situation of an, of a minor at the Grove City facility.
The Grove City?
Grove City, so...
Grove City.
Grove City, yep.
Okay.
My understanding is...
Oh, sorry, I'm just waiting to get the mic.
My understanding is executive sessions are supposed to be announced at these meetings, but for, as long as I know, they haven't been. Do you have an answer for that?
We don't have.
We don't have executive sessions at these meetings?
You have executive sessions, just not during the meetings.
Yes.
But they're supposed to be announced either way, from my understanding, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And you have stated that you've had executive sessions. During one of the meetings you had stated that there was an executive session beforehand with employees from the library, but that was never announced. And same with the meetings about purchasing the new property, did you have any meetings among each other about purchasing that or was that a decision by somebody else and it was just put forward to you?
It was a decision that was collectively done in an open meeting to buy the property.
Well, it took 10 seconds to approve the resolution. Was there any discussion before that resolution about purchasing it? Or, I mean, did you guys communicate at all with each other about purchasing that property before you voted on it?
It was a discussion topic, but there was no decisions ever made.
So you did have discussion on purchasing the property?
There was discussions about how to move forward with the, all of the things that go into the, all the things that we have to do prior to purchasing a property, yes, but there was no discussion, there was no discussion as far as...
So you guys didn't communicate among each other about purchasing the property until the time that was on the agenda?
I personally didn't, no.
How did you come to the conclusion to purchase the property? Did somebody approach one of you and then you decided to put it on the agenda or... What I'm getting at is it seems like you guys didn't have any conversation between each other about purchasing the property. Is that the case, that you just decided to purchase it, I mean, without talking about whether or not you actually needed it or what did it be used for or...
That's always been my understanding.
It's just one of the examples.
The Commissioners' meetings are advertised at the beginning of the year that they are open to the public every day from 9 to 5 with the department heads, and those are when these discussions take places during those meetings, and those meetings are open.
Okay, so you did have open meetings where you discussed purchasing the property?
Advertised public meetings that we discuss it, but it's never official action taken until...
Until it's actually on the agenda.
Right. On the agenda.
So what meetings did you guys discuss, just out of curiosity, what meetings did you discuss purchasing the property?
We discussed with our Veterans Affairs Officer.
When was the first discussion on purchasing it?
As I said, I did not, I was not talking about purchasing the building until it was asked to be put on the agenda.
Who asked to put it on the agenda?
I guess it would be me.
Right.
So you had decided about bringing forward purchasing the property?
Yeah, the property was brought to our attention as being available and we did our due diligence that is required.
It would have been your due diligence, they didn't have any communications about it or did you only speak with one of them about it? Or did you talk about it in an open meeting or...
I spoke to them in an open meeting that I meet with them every Monday at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, so that meeting, every Monday, there's a meeting at 10:00 a.m. that anybody can attend?
So there are advertised public meetings, so at the beginning of the year, so we advertise that we have what we're called Department Head Meetings.
Okay.
And those are open meetings, and those are the ones at which if there's a matter that needs to go on the agenda, for example, for a Thursday meeting, for example, Michelle could bring to us this opportunity.
Okay, that's what I'm...
And that's where it could be described and discussed, obviously as Darrell has indicated, there's not a decision made, but it's just, this is something that should be put on the agenda.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, that kind of information.
Sure.
And you don't know when you first started looking at the property? Would it have been before December?
Yes.
The big question about the property is, it was indicated to the public about the library that one of the reasons you were looking at the library being shut down was to be converted over for the veterans assistance or the veterans. And it was never really openly relayed to the public at any point that that was off the table, that you guys had decided to go a different route, and it kind of puts the public in conflict with each other, thinking that this building was going to be used for one thing when you had already had another building being looked at to...
Well, there was never any official action taken on it, and we had a committee that brought back a report, and although I didn't agree with everything on the committee report, you know, it left out the Veterans Affairs. Now I'm going to tell you something, I'm a problem solver. Now, I'm going to tell you something. I'm a problem solver. I'm out in the public every day. We have advertised meetings that we take. If you're playing games to try to trick us up, I will tell you that I make decisions to bring stuff to the board and to talk to them, but there's never an official decision made until we're sitting right here.
So you do talk to the board sometimes?
We, in our open public meeting, we talk to vet... They're advertised. What is it, what is it you're getting at, sir?
Well, it's just weird for a county never to have any executive session.
How else would you, how else would you bring to the, first of all, is a hostile, is hostile environment? Hold on a second. There's a hostile environment out there, and it would not have worked with, and when the recommendations came to make it a 501(c)(3), which was terrific, and it really solved a lot of problems. Committee did a terrific job. We meet with our Veterans Affairs guy, and we asked him, you know, what is his thoughts, and he brought forth stuff. I can't tell you the day that it came in, because there was never official action made until you're sitting in an official meeting, and it's put on the agenda, and you vote on it in front of the public and the press.
The conversation, you don't have to just have official action. Deliberations is also supposed to be open. You guys are saying that you do have those meetings. It's just weird that, like, two Commissioners would never sit down with their attorneys to discuss lawsuits or anything, or anything like that. It's just, it seems very weird.
There, there are discussions, and there are executive sessions regarding legal matters and personnel matters. That's typically what executive sessions are used for.
And they're supposed to be announced at the public meetings, the public Commissioner meetings. So you have had executive sessions?
Not, generally not at these meetings, we don't know.
If you were to come to a prison board meeting, when the sheriff runs a prison board, on the agenda is the call for an executive session. And he will say, is there any reason for an executive session today? And at that point, James comes to the meeting, and we've done executive sessions for the, for the prison, because there's very sensitive, um, employee and legal matters that you have to be very sensitive of. And people will call for an executive session. We talk about exactly what we need to talk about legally. We open the doors back up and come into a full public meeting again. So there's many different meetings that we have inside there. It's just one example. Yeah, I can't, I don't remember us ever having an executive session here at public meetings.
No, it doesn't have to be at the public meeting. It can be anytime before or after. You just have to announce it at the public meeting.
We do announce it, yes, you're correct on that.
So I think, back to the, I think, the original question, um, I know and I recall there was a meeting before the last Commissioners' meeting at one of those open meetings with the Veterans Affairs, I believe, Pete, you were there, at which we did discuss this at that open meeting. So I know that that, that was a, that was a, so that would have been the predicate to then saying, okay, well, this is something, give it, getting information about what, you know, Pete's, you know, needs were, et cetera, and then putting it on the agenda, which is what we did, and then approved it at the Thursday, whatever it was, two weekends ago, two weeks ago, I think it was.
The meeting just before the...
So I think the, we meet Pete on a Monday, correct? So that, that's my recollection, is it was that Monday before the Thursday meeting. At least, at least for me, that's, that's for me.
You're not holding...
Yeah, and Chief Clerk, I mean, if you want the advertised meetings, because they're set at the beginning of the year, you're welcome to come to any of them. You're more than welcome. A lot of them are quick. Some of them will take a little bit of time, but the public is more than welcome. Input's always welcome, Adam. But I assure you that we...
And their agendas are available, or are there no set?
There are. I believe there's agendas, yeah.
Usually Department Head.
Department Head agendas, yes.
Department Heads will bring in an agenda.
No, they are not placed on the website.
They're not on the website?
I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd look into whether or not you have to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Because that would be useful to know.
Sure.
Whether or not we want to attend it on.
Understood.
Welcome to town.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, well.
Just got a clarification question on that whole thing. So the meetings with all Department Heads that are open to the public, that advertised that they at the beginning of the year for the entire year?
Yes. Yep. And for example, and you might have, like, a separate one where, for example, prison board gets listed as a separate posting about that, but then otherwise Department Head Meetings are noted as happening. All right, we got a question back there.
Outstanding. VFW takes pride in, uh, so VFW community service. So I got to congratulate the post on what they did, and I want to thank you guys for your support for our veterans. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to always, um, thank our veterans. You know what? Because without you guys, we wouldn't have the First Amendment to sit here in front of our, uh, our fellow citizens today. So heartfelt thank you. And I'd like to thank the ladies back there for preparing a dinner for us today. And I just wondered, could we have our meetings here every month? Please? Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, and I would just, I would just echo, so we, we obviously have our, our American Constitution, and it is through the, the oath that each of you took to protect and serve our country that you're supporting, protecting, uh, those freedoms that are ensconced in our, our Constitution. And I take that very seriously, um, and thank you very much.
Could we have our veterans rise so we can recognize you, all veterans here today?
All right. Any other questions? All right, do you want to do the presentation then?
Sure. District Junior Vice, District Commander, or, sorry, State Junior Vice, District Commander, special guest, VFW officer, members, thank you for joining us and realizing a dream come true, basically. Uh, we've been working on this for several years, and it always runs into a situation where, we couldn't get it done, basically. We have one of the largest facilities in the northeast corner of the county, and as you know, Mother Nature is not very nice to us. Uh, we've had several flooding incidents and stuff of that nature. Before I put on the Director of Veterans Affairs hat, I put this hat on. So I recognized some of these needs, and one flood, I had to go to the Tuane Elementary School. Well, first I had to go to the, the Rite Aid to get a guy's prescription to take to the elementary school so he could have his medications, because he lived over here. And I looked and seen the setup they had, and I says, wow, uh, where else do we have these setups? And I come to find, we didn't even have one on the east side of the Susquehanna River. So the entire, this side of the county had nothing. So we started putting the plan into motion, and in April of '21, we got the American Red Cross to come do a site survey. They came up, told us what we needed and what it was going to take to turn this into what they call a Tier 3 Red Cross shelter. One of those things being a shower, ADA compliant bathrooms, and emergency access, as well as a generator to make sure we have electricity and to ensure the heating was, heating and cooling was compliant. Well, we reached out to several different sources and kept getting turned down because of the fact that the canteen is downstairs. Canteen is one of those military terms for basically a bar. So they wouldn't give us any money based upon that fact. So we searched, and searched, and searched, and searched, and I brought it up to these guys. We went through Community Development Block grants, Pennsylvania Department of Military and Veterans Affairs state grants, and it was nothing. So recognizing the need that these gentlemen and former Commissioner Sullivan recognized the need for the center. So what you're looking at here is the culmination of that, that joint session to make this happen. And one thing to, to cover, this was directly from the Emergency Operations Center, our Emergency Operations Center, and it states, "The Bradford County Department of Public Safety has been involved in planning and above working to complete necessary documentation and site surveys to become an official shelter location." So it wasn't just like, hey, you guys, let's put it here. We went through a lot of stuff to get this done. Um, in conjunction with Bradford County Veterans Affairs, we've worked tirelessly with the American Red Cross to make this facility a Tier 3 center. Bradford County presently does not have any designated shelters east of the Susquehanna River. The particular location can be used to serve communities of Warren, Wyndham, Luraysville, Pike, Orwell, Stevens, and Rome in time of natural disaster and infrastructure emergencies. Over the past few storms, we had those 100-year storms that turned out to be two-year storms. I sat in this VFW, I sat in other VFWs doing temporary state grants for veterans. Some of them lost everything. I had a family that lived with us for three months when their house completely got flooded. So a situation like this, and being able to get the support of the Commissioners and support of the county to make this happen, uh, this is basically a dream come true for this post, and we appreciate everything you guys did. And what we'd like to do is have you join us outside as we officially hang. Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Certified Emergency Red Cross Facility. And because you guys were so influential in making sure this happened, not only we serve lunch, but we had a couple extra steaks lying around down there, so.
Do you really?
Steve's out there doing 42 steaks, so. So with that, gentlemen, you want to join me? Put the box on these.
It's a little something, sir.
Yeah. Just like dedicating a bridge, it'd be special.
If I could, Representative Pickett was unable to be with us today, so she wants to, to show her appreciation. So I'm going to present a certificate of appreciation on her behalf to VFW Post 6824. As a member of the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I would like to take this opportunity to thank VFW Post 6824 in appreciation for your willingness to be a Tier 3 in northeastern Bradford County and a Tier 3 Red Cross facility, as well as your commitment to the Red Cross and the residents of Bradford County. Your work and collaboration has made a significant impact in north, in our northeast region, and we appreciate your service. And sign, Representative Pickett. All right. Make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.